hereby given a regular meeting with the board of directors of the district to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on January 26, 2022, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the office of the district on January 21, 2022, at 11:30 AM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551041551050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. Would you have the presence of a quorum today? Present we have Dr. Lallan, myself, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Donahue. If I may please get everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
The United States of America, the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice for all.
And Father, together here together as making decisions for the water district, we ask you to guide us and lead us in making the right decisions for the whole district, customers that are within the district. Just pray and thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments, staff, board. I do have a couple, the flows for the reservoir is at 36.66 right now. It's about the same that it has been for the past three months, I believe, that's pretty close. The other one that I have here is Kenneth Herrera with the lift station pre-treatment department. He passed his D license. Okay, he's not here, but I wanted to recognize him. So congratulations to him and his partners Cruz for helping him and everything that he's learning. Then we also did some new climbers training this past, last week. And the new climbers that we have is Derek Sanchez. Are you there? Rico Cantu, he's not here either. Raul Trocoso and Arnold Lopez, Arnold Lopez is here. Then the retesting climbers with Pedro Gonzalez. Not here, Arnold Martinez. Juan Mayorga and Daniel Gonzalez. So I just want to mention that to the board that they were in training and they passed.
And then you're there too.
Oh, there he is, okay. Thanks for being here, Daniel. Congratulations on you guys training and passing the test.
Thank you.
Well done.
Well done, yes.
Wouldn't see me up there.
Brave, brave. And that is it from me. Anything else to add for close? Thank you. Let's move to item four, considering the special possible approval of the minutes for the regular meeting from December 8, 2021. For approval by Mr. Donahue, seconded by Dr. Lallan, or all those in favor, they are, most encouraged, thank you. Item five, Director of Operations Report.
Chairman, this is the board. And look at the operations as far as service callouts and the burn between 2021 and 2020, and December of 2021, we had 232 service orders and callouts.
Excuse me, for the record, we have Mr. Sharkey joining the meeting. And Mr. Water also joining the meeting, thank you.
Compared to December of 2020, there were 229. So there were three more service orders, callouts for, in the distribution side for this year compared to previous year. In the collection area, there was a drop in, in callouts and service orders from 95 in 2020 to 74 in 2021. And then the pre-treatment and lift station department, they had 55 events that they took care of. And I say events because they don't, they don't really get called out, they just go out there and look at the lift station fixing wherever they need fixing. Whereas compared to 2020, they had 50, so they had five more events this, this year, 2021 than it did previously. You have any report before you, do you have any questions?
We'll have it, sure.
What do you think is the greatest challenge for our operations on this company?
That's part of what I'm bringing up with the managers. Or just that they'll be doing. But I've asked the managers to, to do, if you present to the board as far as 2021, though, the year, with many challenges that provided opportunities to enhance the water system. These opportunities encountered by respective departments also created an opportunity for other departments to assist with the event at the time it occurred, which created teamwork between these departments. Thereby having a team with many players motivated and providing input as to how they could each assist that would best take care of the problem. And we have the, tonight we have Noe Kato with the water plant, Pablo Joa with the suspension plant, and Joel Lopez with distribution manager, Joey Lopez, the efficient manager, and Frankie Conflam with the station and pre-treatment.
Going all watch?
Yes. The reason I'm asking is because some of the events that they occurred.
This is like the Super Bowl shop.
We're working on it. Some of these events that happened, like at the water plant, involved the two or three departments. And so Noe will start it off, he'll tell you what happened in these events and how the other departments, they'll chime in and tell you what they did to take care of, resolve the problem.
Okay, my name is Noe Kato, I'm the project manager. Well, some of these things that we went through, like the freeze, everybody moved the freeze. Took our whole plant down as the YouTube pressure problem, the weather. Is the, what happened was the pressure increased on the stringers side of the pizza, increased pressure and some of the pipes go. With the help of these gentlemen, we were able to repairs, make their repairs. And what mostly existence helped us also was gaining the experience and, and realize what we were missing in the beginning, right? So that, you know, that was a lot better than some repairs.
Yeah, we, what we did, we came together.
To closer term, like.
You know, trying to figure out what went wrong and what happened is one of the racks went down, so we had to shut down the whole plant. So we were talking about it and decided to put isolation valves at each rack. So if something happens again, something like that happened, we can isolate each rack. Like if one goes down, it's still operating the plant and we just isolate that rack. So whether than I, we installed these, we graduated, I don't know.
I'd say a couple of hours.
Couple of hours.
We came in, we chemical heated it completely. I mean, it wasn't like, can we do it? We all knew what we had to do, how it had to get done. And this will prevent any issue, at least in that aspect, that we had that February last year. So I noticed that we learned that we can come together and work in one unit. And we can do that, to serve our customers, to the best part of it. And that's all I thought for the job. Day in, day out, we work as hard as we can, provide service. So in that aspect, what, what they're talking about is that we can isolate each rack and it allows us to create it up even that much, right? That's the simplest way to explain it. And then it also helps us improve our achievement, we've added pressure valves and buildings in our daily, for example. Based on that stuff, the cables, make sure that, you know, we can continue to achieve.
So when you say that, I mean, it's already saying that the demand for electricity exceeds what last year's demand was. So if the power was to go out again for multiple days, we would be able to knock ourselves in the same sequence of events that happened last year, hopefully, I mean, that's the, from learning from that, that's where we're going with this, correct?
Yeah, that's the fact.
Because I mean, that possibility is very realistic.
It's very, yes.
From last year though, was the pipes burst, right? Electricity, we were fine.
Electricity, we were okay and we'll continue, we got a negative power generators. And that's something that, you know, electricians often sound with as the most probably, there was a savings there for being technicians in.
We prolonged it, when the racks got there, oh, this, oh, wait. Racks, but then the transformers, switches and all the electrical components that were there, we didn't have so much to parts. Now we're correct, we got several parts for, we can give order, several parts, it, the whole rack. If we're able to down yet, hopefully doesn't.
But I think all I can add is one thing that Noe and you guys learned, that all we saw and heard about. This was new practice, new design, whatnot.
Yes.
How to do it better.
Yeah.
How to avoid the issues. That kind of been, that into what they've been trying to, especially Noe.
Definitely, we've learned a lot tremendously in all the past year, and we've already begun discussion with project one. We get to that. The next problem was the valve membranes, you know, I mentioned that because it was an issue with pressure, something like that. And I mentioned that to mention the high surface bump situation, right? It was around, you know, similar times and we were down on high surface bumps. Again, a group effort, similar people involved, the same people. And, and we've done, we've made corrections, we have two already friendly high surface bumps. Big force and we continue to have spare high surface bumps. But again, you know, it's the power industry.
Way to solve these problems, we follow Joey, what was up there. When you hurt it, you gotta go to the cement, right? Nothing can be taken out of this, it's fantastic. What they're, people out there, they just did, they were ready for them to do their job. If the, who install, they put together, we connect. They find the.
No outsourced. I know what.
It's a big savings.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that, that again, that's one of the things we take into consideration for.
How many racks do we have there? How many racks do we have, four?
Four, yes.
So it gives us eight million, so it's like.
Gives us eight million.
So with this rack isolation strategy that we've implemented, when the need is there for us to isolate a rack, service it, we reduce our capacity to six, by two minutes. Yeah, and then what about pressure? Are, do we perceive pressure issues in this circumstance that would lead us to service a rack?
Assuming that the demand is the same and remains consistent on that particular day, pressure shouldn't be there because high surface bump. That's just for treatment itself, and if they're over the storage capacity, it isn't concerned that, then you get perfect.
Great.
So you're thinking maybe it was 25% for your rack, or your component. But that's not the case.
Yeah. Because it's a pressure. We had to shut the whole thing down, the one, one rack. And then once we're trying to get it back up and going again, we're trying to get the community to help out, like, don't use your waters, we can build pressure. And now we're hopefully going to avoid that occurring.
Right. The last one is the compressors, the compressor is another one that will take down your plant. And we, we, they don't get down with those compressors. Learned that moving forward into the water plant line, to separate certain areas, we were watching that and it's given us the ability to put the best stress on the compressors. That's very progressive. And there's been long nags, one night, these guys have been out there. Yeah.
What do we compress?
It's air, right, we provide air for our pneumatic valves and for our back washers that require air. And so it, the compressors are the hardest system, without the compressors, you're not able to capture. And I just want to acknowledge the electricians that when we got our compressors, it come up through the patch shop. Different one within, you were able to dig here, so that was a job. That's awesome, without that, we wouldn't be here.
Without that, it's engineering.
That's right.
All hands on deck. We're all out there to.
So that's like I said earlier, all managers, we have, up here, the managers that are out there. Our goal to provide, to show. Everybody have the same goal in mind, hope all is happy.
Well, I'm just gonna, I guess, talk about a project that we did last year. The generator, I guess, that piece of locker. It went out. So what we did, we had a, it's all a new generator, we had a new diamond. And actually, install a new one and building a, maybe not. That's one of the big projects that we did last year. Future projects that we're waiting on is this monofill project. It's going to be like a dumping site for our transporter, that Nali, the Nali, they have trouble dumping their slide. So we're going to build something for them so they can, they won't have any problems dumping that here. And I guess when it rains, they have trouble going back there and put the backup, the slush all the way. So they have to stop the holding slide because they can't go back there. So we're going to build something up each time. Then I have basically fencing around the property that, I guess, we traded with PI. We fence up about 1.400 feet fence, this property.
One, all tools?
Yes.
Again, thank you personally, you guys have done, allowed to do, given the proper tools to do a building. My name is Joel Lopez, I'm the distribution manager. There's a total of nine, myself, I have Luis Navarre, my assistant manager. I have Omar on this, we brought the AMI new system with Luis Navarre. I have Anderson Diva, who does the day-to-day service orders. But that's everything involved together. I got two heavy equipment operators, one Mayorga, and I got three sort of technicians, my team, what they, what's out there is going to be. With each, eight gentlemen, we service the district, everything outside the water plant, unless it's an emergency. Anything outside the pump out, it's a missing emergency. We handle from the river to the end of the island. We do the water taps and that's to go first, they've gone up significantly. 2019, 2020, we had about 131 meters throughout the system installed. 2020, 2021, we had 223, it saw about 65 to 73, which is quite a bit. We also oversee the growth here, we inspect any new developments. I checked, Torrey Pines, Top Off Road, they're going, they're going to expand. We have an inspector outside, the Bahia Grande, this can expand, we've got inspector there. And we're about to start on Monday, our contractor is going to start doing the work, and they're going to, we'll watch on that. Tag on it with that, getting it started. So we'll be on top of that, watching, making sure this is done into our specifications, and if it's not, stop it and make corrections.
What do you say then, inspector, who?
Juan Mayorga. All these guys play multiple roles, just like anybody out here, we all play multiple, we wear different hats at different times. It's just the way it is, and then it replaces, it's just going to be a turn of the page. As we know, three years ago, we adopted the AMI new system, great system. It gives you real-time reading, gives you all the information, one on the meter for the customer, if he has any questions. The bad thing about it, it needs to be maintained constantly. If you let it go for more than a week, your plant catch up and you may not catch up. So we have Luis Navarre and Omar there continually working on that AMI system. Checking in the alerts, anything from tamper to unable to read to device behavior goes on. There's about seven different alerts that we get, and they basically, they got to check. Just recently, they're going to go from 3G to 4G, AT&amp;T on the service end. So we got the components, we've changed, and we're doing that. We're changing it out. Like I said, we oversee line extensions, and as Mr. Lallan mentioned earlier, we have, now have seven certified tower pilots. Which we use to monitor the antenna, the gear, the collector, or anything that's up in the water tank, up in the, it's all. So we got to have those guys certified. Which saves us, I don't know, about $250, $300, they come in, which is all the towers when they come in. Oh, yeah. So that's a saving, it's all right there already. And we mentioned, we came together, last year, it didn't work very well, we were too cohesive and we just got it done. I'm almost done. Wake up.
I'm good. I wonder if these tower climbers can hang Christmas lights. Because climbing towers is something I'll never do, I can't get on my roof right now.
That's about the only thing I haven't done. We've done repairs underneath the bridge and everything, so that's where we're at. And like I said, we do what, what we take to do. At time, we assist our city, the South Fire Island, for the, within kinds of, you know, development for fire hydrants. We go in, we let tap, no charge, we do that for free. Normally, they hire someone, so it costs, the city, save $1,500, depending on who goes in. So we go in there as a service, you know, good public relations, so we do that. And one of the things I gotta say, like, and I keep repeating myself, is that are there for a lot of best for the cost? Any questions?
I know, we appreciate your efforts, your staff efforts, and the entire water district.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will, thanks, Will.
I just want to say, like, you know, I worked side by side with all this other that, right? They have a problem, they are something to do, they call us, like, we'll disconnect. Frankie, company, anything that's available, boom, this issue got to get going all time, it cannot be, like, all put aside. They got to be expected to, like, right away. And anything that has to do with AP power, those are, that's all. All rights, automotive, the maintenance, there are four of us, especially, yeah, we're all the four of us. So I'm working on our, your licenses at the time, so we'll be testing next month.
My name is Francisco Guzman, AKA Frankie, I'm the creature management station manager. Arnold Lopez, this is. We handle pretty much all of the stations that it provides us, whole, the whole water district. Of course, as well as helping out private businesses who have private pump stations, that's where our expertise comes in as well. We have four employees, myself, Arnold, Kenneth Herrera, who just passed his D license in wastewater today. And Frank Silver. Basically, our year in summary, February was, was a crucial moment for us. If you all know, basically, all of the stations were down, all power, pumps have popped. Safe, except for a few that do have generators. Main decisions. Will I stand by pumps that run on diesel power or gas power? Which we appreciate you guys taking a hand in that because we do, we put in our budget. Mobile pump, I know I put one recently, got moved and all that. So we appreciate it, those, those things will come in. Sora, Sora has to keep moving.
Please.
Yeah. I know we have, we're unable to get the picture, but. Yes. So. This is a lift station one. Basically, a four picture. Trust me, it looked worse than the picture. On the street, street, the vista. And then we have after pictures, well, this is after picture, small picture, I wish I could just pay it. So that, that was done, which, you know, the bonds, right?
Yeah, the revenue note, yeah, it's in the 2019 series.
So that, that's going to help out the whole, it's going to be staring. So, yes. This, this station two, it's going to be the water tower on some things. That's what the pumps did before, basically. And then we have the actual picture, that's what it looks like now. It's no longer a confined space, before, we have to infrastructure, just to check the pumps, which is, is a confined space and dangerous to, to everyone involved. I think, I can solve my guess. And now it's fully open. And fine space, basically, is gone. Except for the fact that in the event that we need to enter the well, which, by hiding that from whatever happened. Because these are self-prime pumps, they're above ground pumps, and they, they work. About the construction of these rehab, I mean, we're, we're. Day-to-day, we're there, I was there, he was there, just stacked it up, tremendous amount of fixtures. Giving our input to the construction workers and the foremen and the engineers and putting that input to, to work, and that's making new changes and whatnot, and everything to, for it to become beneficial to the company, for it to be more worth. One, one note I do want to hit on is this station 10, which, of course, you know, everybody took a part in. This station 10 was supposed to be on this rehab, this, it's right next to, where's that? Las Oyas subdivision, or Las Oyas proper. It's literally right next to a ghetto house, through nondescript, painted in the same color as a house. This is the station 10.
This was a high school.
Yeah.
Right before we get to the beginning of it. On the right hand side. This, this rehabber was all part.
Oh. Yeah, like, like, yeah, well, we ended up building the horse baited house.
Yeah, we.
In, that basically saved.
We did a 3400. Prediction department, everybody, we all chimed in.
Yeah, we all got together and, and everybody had part, they got a part with the pump. Pairs and then we had a part out of solving valves to direct the, the, the flow will handle at the district district street. So, yeah, it's, they don't send it to across the highway to another horse main. From this station four, it's going to take a lot more than, well, it's, and, yeah, well, a lot of stuff. From devastation four, it's gonna take a lot more than well, it's, and yeah, a lot of stuff. Yeah, cause we're doubling the size of the lift station in the heights and so it's, it's. The pressure of that.
There were two. The, the, that devastation ten is very small, like seven horsepower pumps compared to hundred some horsepower pumps, so it was constantly fighting. Now we're tearing on the pumps. So by us rebrowning, there a gravity, no force, sorry, pressurized force being all the way
It was about 3,000.
All the way to the Hikes, the first street, Michigan street, Hikes. We're able to save a tremendous amount of money, all the work done in house. Materials were just brought in, ordered right. And these pumps now are seeing runtime freedom. Literally perfect runtime, they're one, runs one hour, the other one runs one hour. This is a, a perfect situation that you want for any pump. Which of course, if you have problems with the pump, it costs to expenditure. So this is a perfect situation where we are in together, everybody chimed in, we have meetings. Realize the project, it came to fruition and we got it done.
So particular, this station at one time was being considered to opt to be outsourced. And we looked at right back on that.
I mean, just to prepare, the plans would have been 150,000, which we just kept that in house.
These guys took care of it with about 3,000.
Yeah.
Well appreciated.
So. And, and just to say, it's a, it's a team effort from, from us to purchasing to Charles to every, everyone involved including you guys. Because any big expenditure force comes to you, which we appreciate. The relief station are spending, just wanted to get it out there, we do our own house spending. Believe we should be outsourcing that. We just provide materials. We'll be overseeing the one at the equal park as well, that's been added to our. Upcoming projects, of course, we have devastation fifteen, seventeen, and thirty five.
Oh, well, they did get a word. It's basically everything on the whiteboard. If you see like that, station twenty five all the way down. The gravity sewer, like that, that gravity line from, from strikes to, to the punch up. Like HEB, we're gonna provide a service line there by gravity. So all those private pump stations that are continual maintenance problems, they'll have a way of having a service line directly to our, our gravity store and they can take their private pump stations out of service. So that, that's, that's pretty significant. Lift station four, if, if that's the heights, doubling in size to get ready for Bahia Point. Thirty five is here in Port Road for the back half of the park center. It's a, just a new package of lift station going there. And then the force main on Woody's Lane, which is gonna be allowing our, our full peak factor for wet weather to get into the plant. Versus us having to run and like shut off pumps to keep the, slow down the flows. So, cause we can't receive it all there at Woody's Lane at the same time. We're gonna increase the capacity with a larger force main. And then seventeen is another spot where that, that horse being there on the, on, what is that trail? Onto that, it's up there, right, like you described it. It's, it's just a series of repair climbs, so we're gonna replace that, get it, get it in a working order. And, and then one and thirty seven are, we're about to have the startups by the end of the month and accept those at our system.
Thirty seven is the one I'm sure where the computer went, it's also untrue. So that's, they can fight compare pictures for that one on two, it's great pictures.
Yeah, I mean, the trends, it's, it's mainly, the only thing holding up is the electrical service, which I mean, was scheduled for this week, but they're still running out. So that's really, that, that's why that bypass pump is making all that noise, cause we've done that.
But we've been, yeah, we're, but we've been very involved with that one, just so you guys know. Day in, day out, constantly monitoring, make sure the plan stays things to those, that things to those are. They. Yeah. Put the same stability on there. So they, they don't like it very much. Um, that's about it. I mean, we just, here to introduce ourselves, just to build summary, you know, we haven't made another thing, but. And we just wanna say thank you, we appreciate, thank you guys.
Thank you all gentlemen.
To sum it all up, Dr. Long's graph, what challenges for this year would be. A lot of them are gonna be continued, basically because of supplies that having problems, not only us, but the vendors are having a hard time getting supplies that are needed. And one of the big challenges that might, might occur at the end of the year is funding. Money right now that we have budgeted for pumps and we've had the couple pumps and, and motors that have already given out the last two, three months of the year. So we're having to buy new ones and we're hoping.
What, what do you, what were you trying to say?
That we're hoping that we don't get any more pumps or motors that go out on.
My budget or?
Budget.
Okay.
Budget.
Okay. Any questions?
I would just say real, real quickly, as a, wanna appreciate all you guys and sharing all that. As a board member, I always feel like I'm kinda sitting in between everybody who lives out there. And there's a lot of fixed income people in this community. There's a lot of people, I mean, look at, look at the homes that are gonna get built. These aren't like big giant mansions getting built on here, you know, there's a lot of people with fixed budgets. So as a board member, I feel like I have to answer those, those guys and watch our costs. But at the same time, I know you guys were underpaid when I came in. And so making sure that in this inflationary environment, that your guys' wages and salaries keep pace and keep going up. So the work that I hear you guys try to do in-house is one way that we can try and watch our costs on this side, but also make sure there's money left over so that you guys get taken care of on your side. So when you are putting in that extra effort, cause it is extra effort, you know, I'm, I'm sure there's so many things we don't realize that you guys are doing. I hope that that payoff happens for you guys. So it just makes it easier for us when, you know, CPI comes up and it's like, do we go with three percent or six percent? That, hey, that's a time where we can say, yeah, let's, let's do it. Cause you guys have put in your hard work, so appreciate that, guys. That's right, that's what we're looking for. Try to walk that tight rope up here as caretakers of the community, but caretakers of you guys who are caretaker for us. So that cohesive unit that you were talking about, it's that same thing, community, you guys and us all together doing that thing. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you all. I will have the other five managers that will make their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, District General's report, Charles.
Charles, this is like already our longest meeting in six months.
The first one's just simply our, our order that we needed approval from T C Q. It was granted, so we received a letter January 11th. So this, this was our, our requirement from T C Q authorizing, authorizing the interior project and the issuance of the 27.6 million tax bonds. So the next step from here is scheduling or closing on the bonds. Which I think basically we're gonna try to combine this tax bond and refunding for the, for the bonds that are originally called here around March or April.
That's right. So. Basically, we're, we're, we have the advanced refunding that, that we had brought up as prior as we before we have an opportunity to save some interest by refunding some system bonds. And we have an opportunity where we could save some, some money on issues cost by doing both that, that refinancing and to bond at the same time. Save some cost. We're, we're trying to wind that up so that it could happen in the.
Yeah, that's the first item. I'm really, I guess the next part of it would be the, just the construction funds being placed in SRO until we receive these approvals. So, so the next tab, I just provided the letters we've already received from T C Q, approval of construction of our clarifiers and also the water distribution system that started with me. So that's really the approval we need to release. And so as we complete the design for the water, that is moving towards the end of the year. For the requirements, you know, to release construction funds. That's basically what the sun was for, just that process. And then the last item is a lift station we have, which I think we covered pretty well for the operations presentation. And so, you know, the, the setting, trying to finalize by the end of the week. Once we get some nice dry weather, we'll have a transformer at, at Ossola Lift Station. And be able to, you know, take, pick that, pick that bypass out of service and get the fire lift station in service. And the, the more will contract.
What are we waiting on AP for?
The, the new electrical service, that, there's a, if you look at the back, like.
The hookup service, so you said?
Yeah, they have to drop a transformer and then install the meter. So that, that's basically.
So it's waiting for, do we have the transformer or we don't?
The transformer's sitting in, semi, you know, AP's office. And so.
They say they have it.
Yeah, they, they had it, yeah, they had it for a while. Basically, the instruction crew, they weren't able to get to it last week because they couldn't, just their schedule this week, they've been ranked out for the past couple days. That's the only reason why it's not already there. And then, but we already gave all the paperwork to get the meter, it's just a, it's. But that's, and then the more will contract, it's, it's the same thing, trying to get things to really start to mobilize. Hopefully by March, we'll have the, start that force being here on Wason and that job.
Carry on to item seven, Director of Finance report.
So want to give the board a update on the internet network upgrade that we did. Replacing our wireless point-to-point network with the wired network that is now complete. We have now fiber optic internet here at this office and cable, coaxial internet service at all of our facilities now. So we, we made the, the change over and everyone is now experiencing good speeds, good reliability. This is really going to help us be resilient in case of a, of a disaster. It's a much more reliable system than the point-to-point system. And eliminated the need for having to prime those towers to replace those, the, the equipment that was often affected by, by weather events, even just high windy days were affecting our, our ability to log into our main servers here at the office and access our data. Moving on to the GFOA certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So this is something that I've been working on since I got here to the district. In order to, to qualify for, for this award. We had to have 10 years of, of financial data. There's a lot of statistical information in there, historical information, demographic information. There's also, it, it took a few years to get all that, all that data together. So this, this award is something that's judged by impartial panel. This gives greater transparency to, to, to the community. As they look at our financial statements, there's no more information in there that helps tell our story. Gives them context for understanding the, the numbers in, in our, in our financial statements. You can see trends over the years on key data that, that helps you see where, where, where our position currently is within the greater historical trends and within the, the community as a whole. So this is, this is the first year we've ever, we've ever gotten it. It's also the first year we ever applied. But this is really a key, not just for giving the, the community confidence in, in our ability here as a management, but also going into our, our debt service that we're going to issue the bonds. The 27 million dollar bonds, we have to have those bonds rated. And, and so we're gonna have the rating agencies look at our, at our, at our finances. And one of the key components is, is the staff and management and our ability to, to manage the district. And having all this information available in our financial statements where they don't have to go looking for it. They don't have to ask us, it's all right there in our financial statements. They can just flip right to our, what if they wanna know our per capita information. All the, the trends information is right there. And it gives them confidence in, in management here at the district, which is an important component of that rate. And a good rating translates to good insure, interest rates for bonds, which translates to money. Especially when we're, when we're talking about 30-year timeframe for repayment of the bonds. Every bit of interest rate that save, saves us big money at the end of the day, so.
Good, well done, thanks for working on it. Thank you.
Good. Can go to item T. So item eight is the financial reports for September 2021. So we're getting close to the end of our, of our audit. We have the, the, was the report for September 21 fiscal year. So as, as you can see on our, on our revenues, we were actually, we only missed our revenues by about 2.5%. What we, what we missed with our, with our water and, and wastewater services. We made up with, with increases in, in tap fees and the new annexation fees for the, for the new subdivision that, that we're putting in. So all that helped us get really close to, to what we had planned in our budget. And on the expenditure side. Also, we felt less than 1% within, within total expenditures, which is really excellent. It, it, the, the only things that were holding us back were primarily the items like the, in wastewater, we had that big piece of equipment that we ordered that didn't come in in time. So that's gonna be something that's gonna carry over into, into the new fiscal year. We were right in line with our expectations for revenue and expenses. Questions about any thing in particular?
Motion to, excuse me, motion to acknowledge the financials. Known by Dr. Lulon, known by Mr. Water, Mr. Starkey and Mr. Don Hughes.
Yes.
All have acknowledged and accepted, moving on to item nine, consider discussed possible approval to purchase lift station 21. Six inch submersible pump for lift station.
Chairman, members of the board, we need to add one more pump to the station 21. These lift stations come directly to the Wood West Water. We are recommending. We, we got some points for, for this, and we're recommending one with silent for the purchase. We've got some points for for this. And we're recommending going with silent for the purchase of one twenty horsepower submersible pump for twelve thousand.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, my doctor Laun, or all those in favor? There are. Excuse me, any both non-motion carries?
It is a budgeted item.
Perfect. Correct.
Thank you. Item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval to purchase of three full-size portable samples for the wastewater plates.
If we are replacing. Some of the sensors and wastewater plants, these samples were also in this fiscal year budget. This is a single source. We are recommended for approved and awarded contract to Teletone Disco for purchase of three autosamplers for fifteen thousand four hundred fifty four dollars.
So.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor. Hi. Underpose motion carries. Thank you. Let's carry on to item eleven. Consider and discuss possible approval disposal surplus equipment.
We have at least some items that we want the order to. To have this. Yes, sorry, if you can.
No, I know. Just. When it's life out. We need to approve or deny this action.
So I'll use this as an opportunity to make a point on a previous agenda item. So this is a clear example that every piece of capital equipment has a lifespan, and 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 much of that lifespan can be predicted to a certain extent. I would encourage us in all of our respective departments to do some sort of capital equipment analysis, you know, so that we're not, to the extent which is possible, in a reactive state. You know, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, kind of fingers crossed something else doesn't fail. If we're in more a proactive state of, you know, we're anticipating this item, this capital piece, this truck, this, you know, it we're reaching its lifespan, we might want to start looking at budgeting, replacing it, or fixing it, whichever one makes more sense. Just want to encourage us all to continue to do that. Hopefully, we're already doing that.
Yes.
You know, I mean, if it was me, I would have some spreadsheet somewhere that had every piece of capital equipment I was responsible for in my department. When we got it, where it's at in that lifespan. What's it going to cost? What's its value? Those types of things. So again, we're not in a reactive state to the extent which is possible. With that, all that being said. I make a motion to approve.
No, I I I'm going to bet you guys are in the same position as as any company. You're trying to stretch your appointment as far as you can. So, you know, it's a Tom Brady thing. It's like. You're early. Superbowl. So, you know, I know it's a balancing act. So.
This is an important part of our of our budget process that we evaluate every year when we're when we're evaluating what our needs are, what the condition of our equipment, we have our our mechanics go review all the the condition of our of our equipment, vehicles, they they give us grades and they tell us, you know, the these are the ones that are in worse condition. And we try to 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 budget and and to replace the ones that are in worst condition.
And those ones that didn't make the cuts are interject. I would have some sort of emergency fund budget, like, hey, these are the three priorities that we want to. Here's three that we might want to keep our eye on. You know, the likelihood of one of these three failing is, you know, moderate to high. And in in the event of a failure in this group, we might be spending this amount. Does this make sense?
Yes.
So it's not only a replacement mode. It's a, here's an emergency fund. When when Murphy shows up, you know, we'll have that piggy bank ready to go.
And again, all these mechanical trucks and and they're already replaced. They have been replaced and these they were just having them until the light is gone. So that that's a equipment that's already replaced.
And I understand that comment's really for the previous conversations we were having.
Carlos, what's happened to this now? This goes to auction.
They sometimes auction all these and and sell to wherever gets the the better price. And someone stays there and we just have to send it a scrap number.
So whatever doesn't get sold in auction.
The vacuum truck would make a great parade. Put Santa up there. Oh, hell, you know, waving to everybody.
We're towed down I thirty five.
Behind the back of a minivan with the.
Escalator to pull it off all the way around.
I'm in. All right. There's motion on the table.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Donnie, or all those in favor. They are any pose, none motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval of instrumentation maintenance service contract for the water plant and mixed water plant.
We advertise and request proposals for the instrumentation maintenance service for all the equipment that we have that water kind of requires. Every quarter, they need to come take a look. It's to be more like not only preventative maintenance, but also calibration. And based on on the on that, we are recommending the broad tool and our the contract to one team solution for a three-year contract of instrumentation maintenance service for thirteen thousand dollars per hundred.
So we had budgeted eighty thousand dollars for this this year. Is that right? Eighty four five.
It's budgeted under the operation account. It's not only that.
There's other items.
Meeting encompasses other.
Yeah.
This is just one part of that.
Got it. So for the entire line item, for the entire account, will we be over on?
So we'll be we'll be within.
Be within. Yes.
Second.
Motion for approval by Dr. Laun, seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor.
Hi.
I are under those motion carries. Thank you. Item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of select management service contract for wastewater plant in collections.
Yeah, we went out for bits for this new for a new contract for as much transportation for the wastewater plant.
Hold on. I don't see any in-house sludge removal closed for this.
We can't do it.
That's the one thing.
Yeah, we need to get a a company with T C Q permit to transport this. We need to, they move this large to our monofill, so it's way more cheaper.
You have to be certified.
Yes.
Or certifiable to transport.
It's just the one that we're transporting to the new one you're talking about, your changing the road. You guys are up breaking the road.
Motion for approval by Mr. Don. Seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor. They are any pose, none motion carries. Thank you. Fourteen, consider and discuss for possible approval for purchase of material for bench repair for water plant.
And we ask for bits for material to repair the changing tents for water can two and the new. A new land that we have next to one. This is just for material. The installation will be done.
That helps a lot.
Motion made for approval by Mr. Water. Seconded by Mr. Don, you're always in favor. They are any pose, none motion carries. Thank you. Item fifteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of any we elevate the storage tank rehabilitation.
We had a meeting for this project on January nineteenth. It's the result that we had a general company recommendation. We're asking the word of truth and a word of partnership O N J colleagues for four hundred and eighty thousand.
We ever worked with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the engineering company, yes.
Yeah, it might be the first contract with O J colleagues, but they've got the recommendations. They're familiar with their work. They're ready to have a job.
Last motion.
Motion for approval made by Dr. Laun, seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor. Oppose motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
That's it. You want to ask for anything else? Like ten for ten right there.
Consider and review expenditures from December first, twenty twenty one to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Chance to review them. Any questions, comments, want to discuss anything, pull anything out in particular, otherwise needs to acknowledge.
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged by Mr. Water, Dr. Laun, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Starkey and Mr. Donahue. All have acknowledged and accept. Let's carry on to item seventeen, consider remove from the table the following executive session item under section five, five, one, zero, seven, four, personnel matters tableed at regular meeting on December eight, twenty twenty one. Deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employees to with the general manager. Want you to take this off of the table. Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Dr. Laun, or all those in favor. They are. We have.
Two years in the waiting. We're here.
Moving on to item eighteen, executive session permitted by the open meetings act, a V T C, a government code section five, five, one, zero, zero, one, at sequence under section five, five, one, zero, seven, one, consultation with attorney under section five, five, one, zero, seven, two, deliberations about real property under section five, five, one, zero, seven, four, personnel matters under section five, five, one, zero, eight, seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Item A, deliberation regarding the evaluation district employee to a general manager. Item B, discussion and deliberation regarding financing information provided by Long Island Village for the necessary construction, expansion of its water and sewer infrastructure and creation of a defined service area. Want you to go into executive session at six thirty six P M. Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Dr. Laun, any pose, none motion carries, or executive session. Need a motion to to come out of executive session at seven twenty four P M. Motion made by Dr. Laun, seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor. They are. We're out of executive session. Item A, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to a general manager. Need a motion to accept the evaluation as as proceeded. Motion to accept by Mr. Donahue. Seconded by this Dr. Laun, are all in favor? They are under post.
And just wanted to say, reiterate what you said in closed session, but thank you for a job well done. Thank you for your service to this community, this district. I myself enjoy working with you. I respect the fact that you're a faith-based man and you handle yourself accordingly. So kudos for everything you've done and do and and the humility in which you do it. You know, with your years of service, I think that's still very attractive. You you know, you approach your leadership position with one where you're you're still learning, right? We learned in February and and you were the first one, you know, to take ownership and accountability and corrective action. And so just wanted to commend you on that. And I know, Scott, you said a lot of nice things in executive session, but on behalf of this entire board, just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again and to all the staff in the district. Let's move to item B, discussion and deliberation regarding financial information provided by Long Island Village for the necessary construction and expansion of its water and sewer infrastructure and creation of a defined service area. Need a motion to proceed as directed by legal counsel. Motion made by Dr. Laun.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor.
Hi.
They are any pose, none motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn or a motion to adjourn this meeting at seven twenty six P M. Meeting is adjourned. Thank.